Thank you Catherine. Thank you Councilwoman Parks. Thank you Dave Cano. This, I got a little overwhelmed because this little black queer kid that went to Hollywood High is standing right here in these chambers in Los Angeles. And it shows you that, just like it says, "Reach for your dreams."
The month is a celebration of identity, of promoting self-expression, the rights to live authentically, and to help combat homophobia, prejudice, and discrimination by fostering and understanding diversity. And the calendar uses a healing power of the arts to help foster that feeling and celebrate and appreciate what the contributions of the LGBT community have brought to Los Angeles. I want to say a special thank you to all of the folks that participated on the committee to help get here, as well as to our city comptroller and to our city attorney. And in addition to the guide, I want to say a special congratulations to today's honorees, as well as the folks that are featured in the gallery exhibition that I hope you all take a moment to celebrate. And lastly, I want to say thank you, and I want to acknowledge Jason Jen, who is standing here with me today as a representative of all of the artists who have contributed to the cultural guide, who will be, and he is the artist of the cover. So together, we are going to unveil the cultural guide.
So let's count down. Three, two, one.
And I want to thank you so much. As the granddaughter of Amariachi, we know what that history has been. And the way you all have continued to be authentically yourself and still preserving and protecting and uplifting what is one of the most beautiful parts of our culture, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for putting yourselves out there to do this. It really is special. It means a lot to our community. I didn't mean to make you cry before this, but I'm really grateful for you all. Chief Crowley, I am so damn proud of you for everything that you represent for this department, for this city. You're an outstanding leader. And I just want to say to all of the honorees from Richard Zaldivar, who I had the blessing of knowing when he was changing in our own Latino backyard, the narratives and being recognized of what has historically been ignored about our community. We were out loud and proud about recognizing that we should all be authentically ourselves and be celebrated for it. That's what each of you represents. And I just want to say thank you so much. I am so proud to be here and celebrate you all. Thank you for your contributions that make sure that Los Angeles continues to be the place where everyone is accepted and welcome to be authentically themselves. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Riri.
And Amariachi Arcoiris, I've seen you a few times. You all came to our Musica and Poemas event in CD1. You came and sang at my friends' when they got married. After their wedding, it was really beautiful. And I was wondering if Councilmember Hugo Soto Martinez and Amariachi Arcoiris would join me in a grito real quick? Let's do it. On three, y'all down? Can you walk us through? Count us down?
One, two, three.
Thank you so much. You all make impossible dreams come true in the city of Los Angeles. Happy Pride LA. Thank you so much.
Mr. Spindler, you're disrupting the meeting. That's your first and last warning.
And before the next speaker starts, Mr. Herman, I saw that you were holding up a sign that is well in excess of our limitations. It's larger than an eight by 11. Do not hold up that lime green sign. I don't care what it says. That rule is in place to make sure that nobody has an oversized sign. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
All items. Which items are opening in?
So the items that are open are items nine through 16, and that's during this regular meeting.
So all items, general comment.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
All right, let's start off with item 12. Item 12 is a motion from Kevin DeLeon and his best buddy, Bob Blumenfield. Doesn't really matter what the motion is. Anything that racist introduces should not be approved. Let's see, we have, let's see. Let's go with item, yes, 12 is the Kevin DeLeon motion. Let's skip to 15, another Kevin DeLeon motion for a Department of Rec and Parks camp, summer camp for kids. Are we going to see more videos, weird videos of Kevin, like, you know, like weirdly feeling up kids' torsos? Because we see a lot of those when he does these summer camps. It's really weird. This is Kevin trying to get more attention. All right, let's go ahead, go back to item, where is it on here? There's a motion related to lighting up City Hall for gun violence from Park and Krikorian and Yaroslavsky. Does this include the gun violence? You know, the various people who have been shot and killed by the LAPD in the last several years? Is this like dozens of people that get shot and killed by the LAPD? And that's barely acknowledged by this council. But they just got more money to continue doing that. And every year, they kill more people than they did the previous year. So yeah. We have item 13, lighting up City Hall for Pride. And this, the presentation you did left out a lot of details about how this council actually views the LGBTQ community. You know, last year, there was a, we saw a lot of anti-LGBTQ hate and violence at Sadequay Elementary. They, you know, fascists went in and burned a Pride flag, you know? And they attacked students and members of the LGBTQ community outside the campus. And, you know, it took Council President Paul Krikorian several days to issue any kind of statement on it, despite it being in his district. We, people asked Imelda Padilla to issue a statement. She never did. Yeah, you. You know, it was, there's very little attention directed to that at all. And we frequently see members of the LGBTQ community assault, brutalized, arrested for protesting in this council chamber. You know, we have, we have a number of them who are scared to even come to this chamber because, because they've been...
General public comment?
Members of the public like Bex and Miss Italy, you know? And you all claim to care about antisemitisms, but really, you care about people, you're opposed to people protesting genocide. But, but, you know, it's worth noting that one of the members of the LGBTQ community who was arrested and was arrested for standing up to someone, to a neo-Nazi with a swastika sign, you know, that, so the non-binary member of the community was, is scared to come back to the chamber after being violently arrested. Yet the neo-Nazis in the chamber right now. So it's very interesting, you know, how little you actually, it's just virtue signaling, that's it. Kevin DeLeon needs to resign.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Can you allow me to speak on all items and a general public comment?
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Can I start with number 13? First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Park for this amazing item, and then to recognize the LGBT Heritage Month. And then I want to echo on my Councilmember Hernandez, because I live in her district for so long, and then she continued to have amazing LGBT services, programs, but they are only in Spanish only. So I really want to have a chance to participate, have a DEI, all-inclusive LGBT services, programs in district, in my LGBT district. But again, I do not have the Spanish language skills. So many of those special LGBT amazing events, I can only just sit there and then doing nothing, because I don't understand anything they were talking about. So I really want to wish this program can have an English multi-language program citywide. Now, move on to next, next item. I see you, Mr. City Attorney. Thank you for your eye contact. Number 14, I also want to thank Councilmember Park again, because it is Gun Violence Awareness Day. So I want to inform my Councilmember Hernandez that we can continue to talking about gun control laws. But again, Mr. City Attorney, do you understand that whatever law you are making, the criminals never follow? The criminals, they will continue to get their gun, no matter whatever gun control laws you may have. Because if they follow the law, they will no longer be a criminal anymore. But our Councilmember continue to talking about reducing guns, reducing guns, but we continue to see the criminals using guns, but our Councilmember Hernandez does not do anything to limit the use of criminals' gun. I see you, Mr. City Attorney. I'm gonna switch to item number 15. Thank you very much for your very cute eye contact. Number 15, it's, I want to thank Councilmember Kevin DeLeon, because this is talking about the services, about the Department Recreation and Parks. I really, I actually call in to my Councilmember numerous times. I want to, there are certain equipment in the council district. One, the park, there are so many trash, many homeless people living in there, and then there were a lot of fitness equipment are filled with human waste, human feces, poo, pee, or whatever. I actually made numerous phone calls, because as a person, as a homo-sybian, I really want to, I can have a right, have a chance to enjoy the park like everybody else. But again, I was continuously to be ignored by my Councilmember. And then, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I see your eye contact. I'm going to general public comment. And then, general public comment, as the member of the LGBT, I really do not know why I receive, experience so many violence on Metro. When I was a man, I received so many violence on Metro. Right now, I am a woman, I continue to receive so many violence on Metro. So Ms. Councilmember Hernandez, when I, when I was a man, you never care about my safety. Right now, when I was a woman, I'm experiencing same violence on Metro system. I have no choice, taking Metro, go to school, go to work, coming back to school, coming back to work. But again, no matter, I am LGBT, whatever gender, I tried all of them, I continue have public safety crisis. I support LAPD. I will support law enforcement. I support public safety. Thank you very much.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker. Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Okay, do I go now?
Go ahead. And if you could pull the microphone a little closer, please.
Okay. Good morning, hi, Ms. Hunt and hi, Ms. Hernandez, and also councilpeople. I'm Ms. Loretta Loretta. I'm one of the oldest transgender there is. I'm almost, I'm in my 80s. And I'll tell you, it was amazing what y'all did here today. I have never seen this, this place like this. I started in 1968, and I've came, I've come here, this is the, a couple of years is when I came to the, to the front door. I remember many years ago, I was in, in a jail cell here. That's how I made it up in here, in handcuffs. And it's so amazing to see all this beautiful things that y'all did today. I'm here for the transgender community, for also, for housing and to make sure they're in a safe environment. Ms. Bambilacito has done beautiful work, also amazing job to make people safe and to keep them safe in their environment. And that's what, I'm here for you to make sure that people, that to keep them safe and alive, because our transgender community are dying in homelessness. And in parks, they're being badged and killed. God bless you all and good evening.
General comment, and my name is Damien Cruz.
So you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. I was just here, just on behalf of the Trans Latina Coalition, I'm here to speak on advocating for the $3 million. As a transgender woman, recently, not even 60 days released from prison, upon my release from prison, there was no funding for me to get any housing, anything to help me out. Upon my release in prison, I spent 10 years in prison. I came out to nothing. And being here, as part of the Trans Latina Coalition, they have helped me over and beyond with finding housing, with helping me get education, helping me get my work, help get my resumes done and everything, and I am so grateful for that. However, we do need this $3 million. It's a lifeline that we need for us, especially for the trans community upon release, because they're coming home to nothing. So thank you and have a good day.
All items and general public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Okay. Mike Greenspan, let's talk about that number 11 first, the budget, because I wear this quote dunce cap to let you know, I'm smart enough to know my math, and $450 million of a deficit is not good for operating. Tomorrow, we officially become indebted, almost half a million, half a billion dollars. Great math, folks. Now, we're talking about all these things. We can't even afford the lights. Your LGBT, all that other stuff, we can't afford the $400 when we have a $450 million budget deficit. I mean, look, Gator Nation has recognized Queer Nation, but you gotta, we gotta call you queers, just like we'd want to be called Gators, not Seminoles, Hurricanes, or Bruins. Now, when I say that, well, what kind of a celebration should you have? Well, since you can't afford it, how about you get a big old vial of queer rabbi come? And hold it out there on the steps. That's about all you could do, because you can't afford stuff. Now, we're going to buy housing.
Please do not hold up that sign. It's too large, presents our council rules.
Well, I'm speaking, Circle K. Thank you. Now, we can't afford housing, item nine, so we have this fuck-up that, a while back, poorly maintained sewage backs up into your kitchen sink, your bathroom sink. And so we're gonna then, in the same district, down the hill from where Mayor Bass lives, buy more housing. You can't even maintain the stuff you have. Nobody's there at the office, and guess who owns it? The city! Yes, folks, you guys in the city are fucking up. That's the only way to say it. Now, let's talk about gun violence. After all, nobody ever asks where the criminal gets their gun. Are we talking about the ghost guns, the .45 magnums? Or are we talking about the Uzis or AK-47s? What, or Tommy guns? We have gun violence all over the world. Just look at Gaza and the Israelis with their genocide over the Palestinians. Just shoot them down like Al Capone, shut down Bugs Moran in Chicago on St. Valentine's Day. Yes, folks, let's talk about gun violence. Now, we got, as we transition from Jewish Heritage Month to Queer Pride Month, because we don't say that other word in Florida, let me let you know, everybody, Jewish girls are the cause of homosexuality, and we have the queer rabbi dudes to prove it. Show me one clamber Baptist minister who's queer.
This is not in the jurisdiction of the Los Angeles City Council.
I'm speaking! Shut up! Now, I'm gonna do my public comment, because after all, you guys are coming up with queer pride. Well, let me tell you, there was this guy, he was about 13 or 14, he'd let a queer suck his dick for cigarettes, and he would only get one pack. Well, the firefighters are gonna get a raise, the police getting a raise, all the unions are getting a raise. It is time the white trash gets a raise on his blowjobs for compensation. Show some pride, you queers. Give that white trash goy a carton. He deserves it for a blowjob. I, I just can't see why you would take advantage of 13 or 14-year-olds.
Not in the jurisdiction of the Los Angeles City Council.
The guy's 70 now, but he definitely got exploited getting a third of the minimum wage per hour. That sucks. Excuse the pun not intended, but that sucks. Give him a carton, and you queer rabbi dudes, give the goy two cartons. You can afford it, you're rich and Jewish, so, and fuck you with all your other interruptions.
We're waiting for the next, who are here or for the first time, either remotely or in person. Unfortunately, we have to allow all members to speak on, no matter what they want, as long as it's been the subject matter jurisdiction of this city council. So the views reflected by some of these speakers do not reflect the views of this council. It highlights, especially today, why we need presentations that, like the ones that occurred earlier. So, good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you'd...
Richardson, general public comments.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Holographs, just like humans, regular humans, commit crime. Some of the holographs are so quick that you, you see it? No, you don't. They commit crimes that quickly. Some of the crimes that you see on TV, people go in and rob, rob these places, may be committed by the holographs. Some of the crimes in these big department stores, they call sweetheart crimes, may be committed by holographs. They do things so quickly, you can't see a move. When I lived in the apartment, my, the holographs would come through my walls, I don't know if it was my attitude or what, come through my walls, get my icebox, eat the chicken, take soap, clean the equipment, clothes, whatever they wanted, they'd take it, by walking through the walls, just as easy. I don't know if it was my attitude, but I noticed when I was calm and nice, they didn't bother me. When I was angry about something, they walked through the walls, just like they weren't there, through the walls, through the doors.
Can we please start the time? Three minutes.
I want to speak in all item as a queer and non-agenda public comment as a cunt. Is that okay with you, Mr. Grok? So, Mr. Grok, as a faggot of the Constitution of the Second Amendment, my nigger ass want to celebrate gun violence, because I know that not one nigger in here, I'm sorry, needle, are you leaving? You don't want to hear my second...
Stick to the agenda item, or you can go, you can speak to the steering general.
I'm speaking on item 14, you jackass.
Then go ahead with item 14.
It's about guns. And guns don't kill people, as Blumenfeld, they're the ones sending the bombs that kill the children in Palestine. It's not me, I'm an American citizen. All I do is buy guns to sell guns and promote guns, and my Second Amendment is always under the infringement of this government that's so fucked up, because I can't simplify as a faggot the truth about guns. Now you know, Grok, Grok...
We go to general public comment.
No, no, I'm gonna go item number, number, number 10 says, and I'll read it for the record, nigger Sambo. The Los Angeles Housing Niggers' property at West Venice Boulevard by CD5 and at Assau on Plum, the Chairman Nigger Sambo, Uncle Tom, has said in resolution, removing the property from the Venice Boulevard case rape, as you all know, as rape. But as a faggot, I'm, I'm not gonna go into all that detail about being raped, but, does anyone got a cigarette? Wait, item 15, DeLeon wants to set up camps during the summer. Well, there's nothing wrong with that. Are the LGBT queers invited? Can we take our little queer dogs and our little faggot friends with us to these camps? Because I want an invitation to go with my little queer dog, and we're gonna sit there and roast mushrooms and melons and, and, and some Sambo soup? What do you call that shit back south? Jumbo-humbo, right, Mr. Madesi? You know what I'm talking about. I'm talking about...
So I'm gonna need you to connect this more to the item that's item 15, or I'm gonna move you to general public comment.
I'm connecting to the approval of your stupid mayor regarding summer break. And the only break the mayor should take is getting the homeless people to these summer camps and off the goddamn street, and putting that president negro up there to supervise to keep these camps clean, because we're sick and tired of the chinchero that you faggots leave on our streets, and embrace it as it's gold. Now onto my general public comment. If I had the opportunity to be a fag and show my flag, I would have pride knowing you would embrace me, being a fag, if you would only understand, being a queer, I'll do it my way. So you see, being a transgender faggot like myself, today I represent the male manhood of what I believe. But deep inside, this faggot, Simplify, will tell you, based on the truth that God hates you and you're all going to hell, because the fact of the matter, fucking faggots rape boys.
So again, thank you for highlighting why we need to have presentations like we had today. Next speaker. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Yeah, 77th and Fig, motherfucker, yeah. So now we get to gun violence. Now, as you know, I haven't been here in a while. Where you been? Well, I was caught with a gun. You see, I'm a felon in possession of a firearm allegedly, so let's exclude amnesty for all felons in possession of a firearm, provided they're not a violent felon. That's in the circuit courts. You know what you're talking about there, Grok, you dumb pumpkin-headed motherfucker? That you have to understand that the federal court ruled, do you have a Second Amendment right as a convicted felon to have a firearm, as long as you are not convicted as a violent felon? Oh, no. That's right. So as you know, I'm gonna be armed again down at 77th and Fig. Make sure everybody pays for their dope on time, get it, motherfucker? Now we're gonna go down to this bullshit on number 13, LGBT, what happened to the Q+ in LGBTQ+? Tracy Park don't like queers, apparently, or she put the goddamn Q back plus. You see, but she want to limit it to the lesbians. And that's because I think Tracy Park love them lesbian, she's around lesbians a lot lately, isn't she? Yes. But see, queer is a definitive term that's very nebulous and oftentimes overcategorized. What does it mean to be queer? Well, a person, for example, that's married to a fat woman, we call a beard, and has a younger wife and a kid who dresses, who's an Armenian, for example, might be a kid.
Mr. Spindler, your time is paused. Mr. Herman, this is your only warning. Do not disrupt the other public speakers. Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Herman can express himself. Now we get to what other shit we got here. Now, let's see, number 10. It's right, the unelected one of the hurt, Edgewood Drive, see what you did, a 55-year lease with a power termination. The landlord tells you to go fuck yourself. He don't want no 55 years. Let's make it five fucking years, or 20 years, like Donald Trump's notices to remain silent. Yes. And then we have other shit here as well. Let's see here, POC's camping. That's right. We're gonna be camping in CD14. Where is that racist bitch Kevin DeLeon today? How come he's not here to support the gay and lesbian community? And why isn't he here to support a POC? Or is Bob gonna use that epithet against that staffer of Bob and the POC? Fuck this city council, what a wasted fucking time.
General public comment.
Now we get there, and as you know, Marquez and his half-brother Alvin Bragg in New York done get that fucking conviction against Donald J. Trump. But you ain't gonna stop it, Marquez. He gonna be your president again. You guaranteed it. All you had to do was call those niggas over in New York and tell them, don't put that white motherfucker on a felony. I've been on felony parole for 20 fucking years. I know what this shit's like. But you can come over to 77th and Fig, I got everything you need, I got the bitches lined up, I got the dope, I got everything. What about the stolen gun? Sir, I'm taking the fifth right now on that until I get my attorneys on it. But you know, we have an old saying, come down to 77th and Fig and get your bitches and drugs, bring your alcohol too. That's right, have a good weekend. Go fuck yourselves, motherfucker. That's right, have a good weekend, go fuck yourselves, motherfuckers.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Okay, item thirteen refers to special recognition of LGBT Heritage Month, but you're celebrating LBGTQIA. So I'm wondering who makes up these agendas? Who proofreads these agendas to come up with this stupid shit? Mr. Herman Herman, Armand Dildo Herman, just made racist comments. Did I hear correctly that he said something like, "Nigger?" or "Sambo"? Isn't that racist? Don't you have a committee in city council to end racism?
This isn't on topic, Mr. Sax.
You let him speak about niggers and racists. How can you do that when you have a committee to end racism? How are you gonna end racism when you're a cocksucker like that?
Mr. Sax, which item are you speaking to?
I'm speaking on, um, LBGTQAIST.
Okay, then please stick to the item, that's item number thirteen.
I am, I'm trying to stick to the item, but you have racist commentary like that, motherfucker? Talking about niggers and, and Sambo.
Okay, this is your only warning, I need you to get on top, or I'm gonna move you to general public comment.
So let's talk about gun violence in America. Thirteen, three hundred million guns in America. Three hundred million guns in America, two hundred million people. Do the math, you got more guns than you have people. You have a shutdown in MLK Junior Hospital. You have this stupid disease, novel coronavirus, which is made up. You have, you have a city, you have a letter, this is from city council, city clerk with a feather for the L. How can you use an L for a letter? I thought you can't use pictures for letters, except in the city of Los Angeles.
So, again, I can't tell which item you're speaking to. You have one minute for general public comment, please begin.
Great, it's a great elevating conversation today. Uplifting. I don't know why you don't use fathead posters to announce LBGTQ Month. Shouldn't you have fathead posters posted around the city? They're the most important type of poster there ever was. You're navigating nowhere, you're going nowhere. It's so racist, you had the KKK right here in city council. Didn't you have an African-American representing the KKK, Michael Hunt, in 2007? And not one goddamn person who showed up at all, representing the best of the Ku Klux Klan right here in Los Angeles? The home of the Ku Klux Klan. Oh, wait, I didn't know it was the home. I thought this was the West Coast meets the Far West. Or Far East, the Far East meets the Far West.
Next speaker. Mr. Sax, you've exhausted all of your time, so please do not shut out.
Item thirteen, Ms. Parks, unbelievable, you know how to throw a party, and anytime you want to invite me, I'm ready, because honestly, this was one of the best presentations, and we've had some good ones. I know a lot of people don't want to hear them, they want to be heard first, but these presentations are so important because they're a background of what this city is all about. So, again, thank you for a great way to start the weekend. Uh, one of the things that I enjoyed about the group that was here was, I asked one of the, three of the ladies, uh, about my granddaughter, her problem about coming out, and they gave me some really sound advice, and I want to thank them for... Now I can go back and have a conversation with my granddaughter, because I didn't know how to handle it. I was, I was afraid, but now I can, I can deal with that. Item fourteen is the gun awareness, let's light this place up. Listen, I, they called me fifty-two guns, but now it's sixty-four. So, uh, somebody might say, "Well, why do you do that?" And, well, I'd rather have them in a safe place and away from somebody else than to have them out in the street, and if I can take them off the street, I will do that. And one day, uh, when my time comes to an end, I will go to the LAPD, and I will turn them over to them, and they will, they will get rid of them. So, again, let's light this place up because we need to be more aware. But again, how about the people who drive the car? The person who gets behind that car and speeds, isn't he worse than the person who holds a gun? I mean, they kill people, you guys, it's stated that every two days, somebody is run over, somebody is killed, and yet we do nothing about that. Why can't we do a better job of, uh, handling the people who speed and kill and then take off? Um, Mr. Preven, uh, I respect your words, but you called the Twelfth District a militarized zone? Just because we in the Twelfth District like to be safe and we want to protect, everybody's welcome. Everybody's welcome to the Twelfth District.
So, Mr. Candino, I can't tell which item you're speaking to, you're welcome to...
Uh, that's number, that's number fourteen, I'm talking about guns and safety and these issues.
Respectfully, you've used your one minute for that item, you can come back to it during general if you'd like.
All right, but again, Mr. Preven, we're not a militarized zone. Uh, the parks, number fifteen. Uh, you know, I love the parks and when the kids are able to use those, but let's make sure there's no PIs around there because, uh, you know, those perverted individuals can hang out anywhere and all they're looking for is victims. So, uh, again, let's make sure our children are protected at the parks. Uh, last item, public comment, may I, sir?
Yes, uh, you have one minute for general public comment.
All right, Stacy, Cigar Bolinger and I don't agree, but I respect her. She talked about how, uh, they needed whistles at the, uh, the crossguard, so we purchased her some whistles. I asked her, "Just do me one favor, don't use them here at City Hall." So, Ms., uh, Stacy, whenever you're ready, we have them for you, and, uh, again, use them with the, the people that you work with, because one of the most dangerous jobs is the, the people that work with our kids on the street, trying to make sure they get safe home and to school. So, again, uh, it's not meant for this, so if one of them shows up, I apologize. Thank you, sir. I'll be back for seventeen.
General public comment.
Okay, you have one minute.
Ninety minutes of presentation, simply amazing. Uh, all this talk about lighting your load, no talk about cutting those presentations. Um, but you do want to cut meetings, and just for everybody's notice, uh, Council File two-three-dash-one-zero-two-seven, the CLA's report from the committee is up there now, and Paul likes to give us as little notice as possible before these things come up, and, uh, they've got, you know, just over a month before recess, not a lot of time for the city attorney to turn things around. Look for this to come up very, very soon at council, and just be ready for their bullshit. Um, just a reminder, for some context, over a single four-year term, these elected officials each receive about a million dollars in compensation. And their big push right now is to clamp down on your input. And, uh, the meeting issue is only one part of it. There are a number of ways I can easily think of that they could do to limit your input that don't require a charter change or even a change in the council rules. So just be ready for their bullshit.
Mr. Kwan, your time has expired.
Have a nice weekend.
Uh, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, which items would you like to speak to?
Um, I heard that it was like special earlier, but can you just tell me what items are available, please? And also, uh, general public comment?
So the items that are open for public comment are items nine through sixteen. We're still in the regular meeting.
Gotcha, gotcha, um, okay, cool, so I'll take all available items, please, and general public comment if it's available.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Thank you so much, um, speaking of the items, thank you, city attorney. Uh, I only get through it when you're running the meeting, um, I appreciate it. So regarding the items, um, lighting up City Hall for anything at this point is crazy. You heard a previous caller say eight hundred dollars is a lot of money? Eight hundred is a lot of money. However, that's not the amount we've spent so far, just this year on lighting up City Hall. I really desperately, I'm calling out publicly for the city controller, who claims to be so progressive, Kenneth Mejia, to do a audit on the lighting up of City Hall. Um, every time we do illuminating City Hall, it's four hundred dollars. We're usually paying for it after the fact, which is kind of funny, I never get to pay for anything after I get it, but that's a different story. Um, I really want to know how many thousands of dollars? Mind you, it just takes lighting up City Hall three times to get over a thousand dollars, and we've already done it more than three times just this month, I'm sorry, just this year. So, we've done it dozens and dozens of times. Four hundred times ten is four thousand. And I know everyone that pays attention to these meetings knows we've done it more than ten times. Have we done it a hundred times? How many times have we done it? I've been paying attention to these meetings for a few years now, a lot less time than other people. So I know other people remember there being lighting up of City Hall way more than ten, twelve, twenty times, okay? We've done it at least a hundred times, we've spent at least forty grand lighting up fucking City Hall. It's retarded, it's bullshit, we need to stop. We can't be in a deficit, we can't have our city dilapidated, falling apart, street life's not working, potholes everywhere, and people not knowing where the fuck to go when there's something wrong with their home or their property or their apartment. And yet you're lighting up City Hall every fucking week, multiple times, spending four hundred dollars like it's nothing. That's ridiculous. Um, and also, gun awareness, gun violence awareness? Uh, we never hear anything about, uh, freedom awareness or, uh, constitutional amendment awareness. You have a right to arm yourself with a gun, it's there for a reason. We need to stop fear-mongering about guns. We don't hear much about slip and fall awareness. How many times does the city go to settlements for hundreds of thousands of dollars because of slip and falls that are caused because of sidewalks? Sidewalks are all fucked up, okay? They spend fucking hundreds of thousands of dollars because of slip and falls, and yet you hear way more about this gun violence, gun violence. People are getting stabbed on the fucking train. Do you think maybe we could protect ourselves if we were allowed to carry? Oh, wait, that's the way the fucking world works. If you defend yourself, you're less likely to fucking die by an armed assailant. If you have nothing to defend yourself, because the human has nothing to defend themselves against a fucking blade, you will die, you need to be up to carry a gun. Armed society is a polite society. LAVali Gun Club at gmail dot com, LAValiGC at gmail dot com for identification purposes only. Shout out to, uh, Daniel Gus. Um, I think I still have a little bit of time on the items.
General public comment?
Uh, so speaking, okay, sorry, general public comment? Uh, LAVali Gun Club at gmail dot com, LAValiGC at gmail dot com, we're looking for members. We should be doing something, I want to get together in Burbank, I believe. There's a black-owned gun store, I'm sorry, gun range in Burbank, I think it's Burbank. Um, of course, that's outside of the city, I'm sorry. I'm trying to find a place within the city limits that we could all meet. Uh, I want to do it the weekend of July fourth, uh, maybe that's Sunday or Saturday, um, beforehand. Also, uh, guys, they're trying to cut out our public comment, they want to cut down the meetings. It's crazy, I don't know what else to say. Get armed, something big is gonna happen, and these people are not gonna help us out during it. You need to have your arms. If you're afraid of guns, go shoot a BB gun, work your way up to a fucking twenty-two, okay? Then work your way up to a, uh, two-five ACP, then a three-eighty, okay? Then a thirty-eight, you don't have to go straight to a forty-five and get scared because of a big explosion, okay? There's ways to defend yourself without going a big bang, you do a little bang. A twenty-two will ruin somebody's day.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Call earning in four-six-one-zero, please press star six to unmute.
Um, yeah, yeah, uh, yeah, hi, spoke on another phone. Thank you, Grok, for letting me get in this meeting, I really appreciate it, man, you're very professional, thank you.
Thank you, next caller.
How apropos that this morning during presentations, there were members of the community that simply wanted to be recognized and to be heard. The irony that last week's city council limited telephonic public comment to five minutes. What is concerning is that the council member that announced that stipulation will be in the very near future running city council. Will today be the last day members of the community will be recognized? Will today be the last day they will be heard? Will the future city council president be responsible for silencing the voice of the residents of the city of Los Angeles? Time will tell. Dum, dum, dum.
All right, so on item seventeen, item seventeen is allowing the city to raise the pride flag on city facilities. I do support that, um, should raise the pride flag and have that displayed. Um, that's a good way to do at least a little bit, kind of the bare minimum, to support the LGBTQIA+ community, um, which you need a lot of work on because you've done very little to support that community. Um, so, um, so for the six of you who are here and the none of you who are paying attention, um, you know...
Can you hold his time, I'm sorry, Mr. Grabner. Mr. Spindler, you know these rules, you attend almost every single one of these meetings. Do not disrupt public comment, this is your first and only warning for this special meeting. I can't hear what Mr. Grabner is saying because you're having a conversation with I don't know who. So this is your only warning, I'm sorry, your, your time was paused, go ahead and continue.
But, um, but, but, yeah, I mean, you, you do very little to actually... And, and we frequently see violence against members of the LGBTQIA+ community in this chamber, um, from the LAPD officers, um, so you've got a lot of work to do here.
Right, all items and general fucking comment in this special, yes, that's right. And look at the board there, Dayline ain't fucking there. Dix, eight, ten, I don't even think you got a quorum. But some of you motherfuckers walked out of this vote, fuck you, motherfuckers. Now, what kind of flags we gonna fly? I know Bob wants to know, are they gonna fly a swastika? Yeah, 'cause you talked about it, Bob, what if they're gonna fly a fucking swastika, right? You say "flags"? Because you want to fly a fag flag, you can't fly a Nazi flag, you gotta be able to fly all kinds of flags. That Tracy Park know better than that, she just a crazy lady now. But I know Amelda, I know you gonna vote no, I know Price gonna vote no. Here's the last thing you want to see, is a swastika flying over City Hall, motherfuckers.
Your time has expired, next speaker. Mr. Herman, you need to get to the podium expeditiously, there are other speakers in line.
Excuse me, but I have a disability, and it's just because you're invisible.
Go ahead. Can we start his time, please? Please start the time.
Oh, so now you niggers want to pick on a faggot like me because you don't want me to fly a fucking faggot flag here in the city of LA? Well, I'm against it. You shouldn't fly a faggot flag with an American flag, you fucking Simplify fat faggot, circle K idiot moron pathetic imbecile. And the reason behind that is because Sambo's Uncle Tom's there, is trying to figure out, well, is the puppet right? Can a faggot like Herman and him flag a swastika in LA? Well, why not? It's Native American. We created it, we saved your ass from a holy war from those fucking Germans when we got involved with our fucking Tatanka language.
Speaker, this is not on the agenda, so get back to item seventeen.
Listen, you fucking fat Tatanka, I'm speaking, I got the floor. Fuck you on the flag, and fuck your faggot fag.
Next speaker. Mr. Herman, this is your only warning for this special meeting, do not disrupt public comment, do not shut out. Mr. Sax, go ahead, you have one minute for item seventeen.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sax. Uh, since this is the first consideration of this ordinance, have you posted this ordinance so the public can read the ordinance? Does the city council, doesn't the city council have to post ordinances in two spots so the public can review them? I don't see any public people here to look at this ordinance. I don't even see what the ordinance is. It's about hanging a flag. Would you hang a flag supporting the Simones Liberation Army? That was created back in the mid-seventies? Isn't that a racist organization? Where the hell is Symbia? And why do you have, why don't you support the KKK? You had the KKK right here in city council.
Mr. Sax, I can't tell which item you're speaking to, please speak to item number seventeen.
You're asking about flags, doesn't the KKK have a flag that they would fly? Wouldn't they fly a flag?
Speaker, your time has expired, next speaker. Good afternoon, you have one minute for the item, please begin.
Mike Greenspan, I just wanted to say, first of all, this is basically about the fag flag, okay? You had a whole year. You had a whole year from July first, the start of your fiscal year, until now. Why at the last minute are you doing this motion? You had your whole year, well, what happens? The council, the guys jerk their dicks, the gals play with their puss, and nothing gets done. Even Downey, which has a queer mayor named Mario, they will not fly the queer flag anymore. There, it's just the three flags of the various governments. And, I, so, yeah, you, you do all your symbolic shit. As far as I'm concerned, why don't you guys just get some queer rabbi come and put it on the steps? That's what you should do, because remember, Jewish girls are the cause of homosexuality, we have queer rabbis to prove.
Your time has expired, and also your sign is in violation of our council rules.
All right, uh, flags in, uh, city facilities. Uh, I should get a smoking scan flag up in there. Damon brings more people than anybody to, uh, these city council meetings to, you know, learn about this stuff, and they come to hear Brock Landers. learn about this stuff, and they come to hear Brock Landers, I'm the coolest. I think LA Valley City Gun Club should get a, uh, flag up in there, you know, firearm awareness is, uh, important. Why not, uh, show it in the city facilities? Hit me up if you want me to teach a class in the, uh, love gun. Uh, and then if we're putting up, uh, LGBTQ flags, uh, what happened to the QIA? I think that we should do more for the LBGT community and people with body dysmorphia. We should remove any age limitations on breast augmentation surgery and the limitations on tattoo shops. If a kid can get puberty blockers, they should be able to get tattoos and, uh, breasts as well. Uh, everybody, uh, have a good weekend and, uh, speaking of shit and stuff down people's.
Calling, your time has expired, next caller.